Next up on the agenda is something that a number of folks have been interested in seeing and hearing from regarding the report about the fireworks district and the incidence of cancer, particularly brain cancer in the town. And so this evening, we have the pleasure of having Dr. Julie Goodman from the Department of Public Health to present the findings of the report and answer questions from the board. And then we will take some comments and questions from the audience as well. We are going to try to keep tonight's agenda to the facts of the report and not get too far off course with regard to the situation itself. But we have been waiting anxiously for the results of this report for quite some time, as have a number of people in town. So I look forward to hearing the results and we'll go from there. So with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Julie Goodman from DPH.
Thanks. I should actually clarify, though. I'm not actually at the DPH. I'm at Gradient, which is an environmental consulting firm out of Boston. And I was hired by Joe to review this report and look at the methods and then basically talk to you about it. Basically, explain, you know, how these analyses are conducted more generally and what information they can provide and what you can conclude from this specific analysis regarding the National Fireworks Site. And just to give you a little of my background, I am an expert in epidemiology and I'm board certified in toxicology. And I conduct a lot of analyses like these and review a lot of analyses like these. Also, just as a sidebar, I'm also on the Board of Health in Canton, not too far up the road. So this room looks very familiar, though I haven't seen ours personally in a long time. We're still all remote. But at any rate, oh, and I should say too, before I start, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt if it helps. But basically, there are two analyses. I mean, the main analysis here is an epidemiology analysis, and there's also an environmental one. So and they're both very important for addressing this question, whether there is a likely cancer cluster around this fireworks site. And so I will start with the epidemiology one. And just to make sure everyone's starting kind of on the same page, I just wanted to give a little background about a few fundamentals. So epidemiology is the study of the causes and distribution of disease in populations. And so it's really a statistical science. And what epidemiology studies do is they evaluate whether you have more incidences of disease than you would expect in a given population or people with certain exposures, or anything in sort of comparing to different populations. And if there is an excess of disease, that could mean that it's caused by something that's different between those two populations you're comparing. So another kind of fundamental that I think is important is that unfortunately, cancer is much more common than people realize. One in three people will get cancer in their lifetime. And a lot of times, you know, when people start noticing a lot of people with cancer around them, it can be very alarming. And sometimes it can be a cluster, it can be due to some cause, but sometimes it's just kind of the natural distribution of cancer. That's to say that this is just how much cancer there would be, whether or not, you know, there's some environmental or some other exposure there. And so really, these types of analyses, what we call cluster analyses, are designed to try to understand is, is this an unusually high number? Is this more than you'd expect? And if so, then to dig deeper to say, well, if it is more than what you would expect, what could be the reason? And so I know I've seen the statistic out there about, you know, there are 6.4 out of 100,000 people get brain cancer. And that number seems very low. And so when you start seeing more and more cases, it's alarming. But actually, that number, 6.4 out of 100,000, is an annual rate. That's how many people, the rate you would expect over a year. In terms of lifetime risk, the number is 0.6 out of 100. So it is much higher than that. And again, even saying 0.6 out of 100 might seem low compared to how many cancers people have observed in the area. But keep in mind, what we're looking at is over a 30-year period. So what that translates, that 0.6 in 100 in terms of a lifetime risk for any particular person, actually translates to a much higher number over a 30-year period over any geographic area. And so the idea is, and you know, what we would call this, I mentioned it called a cluster analysis, because you're looking to see if there are any cancer clusters. Mass DPH called it a screening level review. But the idea is, again, trying to figure out if there's more cases than you'd expect. And so what you're doing is you're both looking at the geographic area, are there more you'd expect in a geographic area? And are there more than you'd expect over time? So I think the thing to think of is, or sorry, I wanted to get it. So we want to know if it's sort of natural variation and random fluctuation when you're looking in an area, or is there actually an excess? And so I talked about you, you want to look at if there's more cancers than you'd expect. And so the question is, how do you know how much you expect? Well, you need some, something to compare it to. And so what's done in Massachusetts is you compare it to the average rate in Massachusetts over the whole Commonwealth. And this is what's generally done around the country. If we were in Pennsylvania, we'd compare it to Pennsylvania rates. And keep in mind, too, you're comparing to an average. So I know this is obvious, but the average is in the middle. Half of the areas in Massachusetts are going to be higher than the average and half below. So you don't necessarily need to be like bang on the average to say, oh, this is what you'd expect. That's why you do statistical analyses to say, are you statistically different than the average or not? And if you are, that could suggest the possibility of a cluster. So and I don't want to get, Joe told me it was okay to get into the statistics. So I hope I don't lose you. If I do, let me know, or you can gloss over this part. But the question is, so one issue is, the biggest risk for cancer is age. Older people are more likely to get cancer than younger people. So if you're looking at an area that has a different age distribution than the state as a whole, that could skew your results. So the way these analyses are done is you basically, as you know, if you looked at the report, the state looked at six census tracts in the five towns. And I think it was five towns, and eight census tracts, rather. And for each census tract, they break it into five-year age interval. So you could say children zero to four, and sorry, zero to four, five to nine, 10 to 15, you know, all the way up to 60 to 64, and then everyone 64 and up is grouped together. And what you do is you break Massachusetts into those age categories as well. And so you say, in this age category, say, 20 to 24, this is the rate of brain cancer in this age group. And so you would expect that same rate in that age group in the census tract. And so then you essentially add up all of the cases in the census tract, and then all the expected cases based on Massachusetts, and you compare them. And as I said, it might not be, you know, right on the, right on the nose. So what you do is statistics, and you determine if something's statistically significant. And if it is, the way that's interpreted, the way that it's done is, you calculate a 95% confidence interval, meaning you're 95% sure that this difference is real, and it's not just some statistical anomaly, when you have a statistically significant finding. But what that also means is that, you know, 95% is 95 out of 100, which is the same thing as 19 out of 20. So that means every time you have, you know, 20 statistical analyses you do, you're going to expect to find one statistically significant just randomly. So another key is not just looking at statistical significance, but looking at, do you see any trends in statistical significance over time or over an area? Because if you just see some kind of occasional statistically significant findings, that means those are probably chance findings. It's not likely a cluster. And that's basically what happened in this analysis, is that eight census tracts were looked at over 30 years in total, and also in three 10-year intervals. And of all those analyses, looking at both malignant and benign brain cancer, there were only three instances of statistically significant findings, and they were barely statistically significant. There were no trends over time, there were no geographic trends. And so, and also, the ages that people got the cancer was when you would expect, and the histology or the cell types that they occurred are what you would expect. They were kind of typical. If it happened in sort of ages that aren't typical, or if it was different cell types than normal, again, that would be cause for alarm, but that wasn't the case. Also, there were more cases where there was a higher population density. So all of those things together indicate that this study doesn't support a cancer cluster. And I should, I do want to make the point, too, because I was talking about the numbers before, and how many cancers you would expect. And if you actually, you know, based on Massachusetts rates, rates across the country, over that 30-year period, in all of those census tracts combined, you would have expected 98 cancers. And that number seems huge. And when you think about it, it's people, and it's people getting cancer, and what a horrible disease it is. It is huge, and it's a terrible number. But in terms of this analysis, what that's saying is that without this, you know, fireworks site, you would expect to see 98 people with cancer. And again, if you put that on a map and looked at those census tract, it would look very alarming. But it's just something to keep in mind, that because that's what you'd expect without the site there, the fact that, you know, 96 cases were found in that same area says that's actually what you would expect had that site not been there. But I would say, you know, for kind of, to understand this analysis, it's not perfect. It's not the perfect analysis. And the reason is, one reason is it's only based on the address of diagnosis. So people that, you know, lived here and moved away won't get counted, and people that didn't live here and then moved here are counted. And so that can skew the numbers. It's possible that you could potentially miss people. That is one limitation of this analysis. Another limitation is that you don't have information on anybody that was diagnosed. There's no individual information. We don't know any of their risk factors, if they had a genetic predisposition, if they had any other risk factors. The two known risk factors for brain cancer are genetics, like having some sort of genetic hereditary disease, or radiation treatment for another cancer, or an excessive radiation dose, like from an atomic bomb, something like that. And so we don't know that information about individuals. So again, knowing that you could potentially rule out potential causes in those people. The hardest thing, though, is that, and another thing that isn't well understood, is that for most cancers, we don't know what caused them. So for some people, we might not, we might not, some people we might be able to say, this is what caused it. But for some people, we might never know what caused it. And that's, that can be, you know, frustrating. But I think the idea of this analysis is that just because we can't rule something in, doesn't mean we could potentially rule something out. And so I just, I think it's important that you realize that, that that is a limitation of this kind of study. And it's always a limitation of this kind of analysis. But what this can show you, I mean, if you did see some unusual clustering either over time or space, that would be evidence for a cancer cluster, and you could take it to the next step to see if there was some cause. But this study did not find evidence of a cluster. So over a 30-year period, based on the average rates in Massachusetts, you'd expect 98 people to get cancer in these eight census tracts. And there were only, or there were about 96 found, which is about, pretty much equivalent. And so the bottom line is that, well, it's possible that some cases were missed because of people moving in and out of these tracks. The epidemiology study doesn't doesn't show that there was a cluster. But the other thing that I think is really important to keep in mind is the environmental piece, because this isn't, you shouldn't look at this study alone, but in light of the environmental study, which I think is actually even more informative. So, you know, as, I don't know how much you've all looked at the environmental assessment, but they did look for chemicals, and chemicals have been found. But in terms of chemicals causing cancer, chemicals are very specific in terms of what cancers they can cause. There's no, you know, most chemicals or radiation can only cause certain cancers, if they can cause cancer at all. And also, there's a dose, a minimum dose necessary to cause those cancers. So as I mentioned before, high-dose radiation can cause brain cancer. But it's only been shown to cause cancer in high doses. So people, all of us are exposed to radiation in our daily lives, just living on this planet. You get more radiation when you fly in an airplane, you get more radiation when you get an x-ray or some other medical procedure. So you're always exposed, but the issue is if you're exposed to excessive amounts of radiation, that can increase your risk. But according to the environmental assessment, there was no excess radiation at this site. The levels were typical of background levels. And so that is really, you know, again, if radiation was found at really high levels, that might suggest that it's possible that it could have caused brain cancer in certain people. But because it wasn't higher enough, the study didn't provide evidence for that. And I guess the other thing to mention, early studies suggested that vinyl chloride could cause brain cancer. That has not been confirmed in more recent studies. But even so, levels of vinyl chloride was measured, and the levels were basically so low that there was not thought to be any, any potential human exposures. So I think, you know, that, again, when you look at the epidemiology alone, it does have some limitations. It can't, you can't 100% rule out the fact that people might have moved away that got cancer. It certainly doesn't provide evidence itself that there is a cluster, and really taken with the environmental study. Together, they suggest that, or they don't provide any evidence that exposures from the site caused any of the brain cancers. And so I think that's kind of a brief overview. And if any of you have any questions, I'm happy to, to address them. Again, I did not conduct this study myself. I was hired to basically review the study to make sure, to review it and look at the methods and, and talk to you all about it.
Thank you, doctor. And I appreciate you clarifying that town manager hired Dr. Goodman to take an assessment of the report and present it to us and let us know what her findings were. So with that, I want to see if anyone on the board has any questions for Dr. Goodman.
Mr. Chair.
Vanessa.
So this is more of a clarification, I guess, to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So I think one of the concerns that a lot of residents in town have is related to those three statistically significant census tract findings. And I just wanted to confirm that those, while statistically significant, are not indicative of a cluster, because it is normal in doing this type of study to find, just by chance, statistical elevations, and these that were found are within kind of the norm and what's to be expected in doing that research?
So I think the idea is, is that when, so the fact is, is we only saw, so for the invasive brain cancer, it was only in, you know, one census tract in one 10-year period. It wasn't statistically significant in the other two 10-year periods, and it wasn't significant in any of the other census tracts that are nearby. And so it's basically because you have to look at the totality of evidence. You know, if you just did one analysis and found one statistically significant finding, that might give you pause. But it's when you look at it in the light of all the other analyses that were conducted, you look for trends, and there were no trends seen. And that's why the way to interpret it is not that it indicates kind of an elevation. Just like if you look at some other numbers, you know, they're not statistically significant, but you know, there's one census tract in Hanson, I'm just looking now, that, you know, there were four expected, and only one was observed. So that doesn't mean that there was something in Hanson preventing the brain cancers there. It's the idea that, I think the thing to remember is that everyone with cancer doesn't live an equal distance from everyone else with cancer. So it's, you know, the census tracts are all pretty close to each other, and there's no reason to think that one is a hotspot over the other with respect to the, you know, exposures from the site, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I would also just like to add that I have particular interest in this topic, as do many people in town. But I do have a family member who, in the past year and a half, has suffered from brain cancer unexpectedly, of course. And I don't happen to tie it into this particular theory. And I'm happy to see this, this news. And, you know, I may not have the same opinion of some others in town, but I'm certainly happy to get an update and see that, at least from the scientific standpoint we're looking at here, that it's not likely that, that it's been caused by any particular location in the town of Hanover anyway. But with that, we do have a hand up from Steve Luko. So I'm going to call on Steve here. Can you hear me, Steve?
I can hear you. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. If we just have your name and address, please.
That's Steve Luko, 43 King Hill Road. And I just have a question for the doctor. You know, in Hanover, we want to see that the site's cleaned up. And we want to believe that it's not making people sick with cancer. Now, my questions involve the study that was done. And I appreciate you taking the time to come here tonight to explain it to us. You know, in the last year during the COVID pandemic, you know, we've, we've come to really appreciate the Department of Public Health. We get daily statistics on a fast-moving pandemic. So my first question about the study is, you know, why it's based on data that the most, you know, the most, with the most recent data being over five years old, and, you know, with something as slow-moving as cancer, when I'm sure that even up to 2020 would be available. And also, I know you spoke to the limitations about the study and, you know, having to do with where people live at the time of diagnosis versus where they live currently. And if that's a limitation, and you know it's a limitation, why can't the study change their method and do better to give us the comfort of, you know, a study that doesn't have those limitations?
Both are really good questions. If you have more, I'm happy. I just don't want to forget these before you ask more. The first is that the way that the Massachusetts gets the cancer data is there's a cancer registry where the hospitals have to basically report all incidences of cancer. And so those data get entered into the registry, and then they have to be, undergo quality control. So I know it takes a significant amount of time for that to happen. You know, I don't know all the details of the process, but I do know, to me, I would, I would rather that there be a little bit of a lag in getting the data and being more assured that it's accurate than getting it up faster. So that's why it takes, you know, that there's that lag at getting the data. And then, in terms of that limitation, I think the problem is that it's not, right now, it's not possible that if someone, you know, say, moves to California and then gets diagnosed in California, there's no record showing where they lived in their entire life. And so then the Massachusetts Cancer Registry could then pick up that information and bring it over. So that's, I mean, it's just a limitation of any, any kind of analysis like this, that you just can't get access to those data. So, I mean, it's certainly possible that, you know, someone that lived here, or someone that lived in a location, was exposed at that location, and then moved away, and you're, you're missing them. And so that's, it's right now, with technology where it is today, it's just not, it's not something that you can really overcome with a study like this. And so that's why I said, a study like this, if you find a cluster, it can, or if you find a trend, it can provide some evidence that there might be a cluster. And then if you don't find one, it's not evidence on its own because of those limitations. And so that's why it's important to look at it with other kinds of information, like the, the risk assessment and the environmental analysis.
Thank you. My last question is, given our elevated numbers, right, and, you know, I guess, your take on it is that we shouldn't worry about the elevated numbers because they're comparable to the state's average. And, but has there been any analysis done on the numbers that make up that average, and, and what their geographic distribution is? Because my concern is that if those numbers are made up of incidences of cancer that are all located around other questionable and contaminated sites, you know, comparing our numbers here to the average, you know, it may be masking, you know, an issue that's consistent in other municipalities.
That's a good question, too. So I don't think that's really been looked at. But what I can say is that Massachusetts releases town and city numbers every year. It, to my knowledge, doesn't look at the census tract level unless someone requests an analysis be done, or there's some other reason. But I believe that if there were, if what you're saying were true, that would show up when you see the data, you know, by, by certain town or certain city, you would sort of see that reflected in those, in those data. And to my knowledge, that isn't seen. So I think that's how I would answer that, that I can't tell you with absolute certainty, because it's not something that I looked at. But I do think that it's, it's unlikely that to be the case, because something like that probably would have shown up in those data. And also, I mean, another thing is that, as I said, that right now, the two known causes of malignant brain cancer are these really high-dose radiation, and also potential hereditary syndromes. And most people with brain cancer, the cause isn't known. So that's likely also reflected on the state level.
Okay. So, but there's not really any analysis done on the geographic distribution. So I guess, you know, we should, we should take comfort that, you know, our numbers are, are average. But I guess maybe there's some more analysis needs to be done. Is that something that a study would, 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 would take further? Or is the study complete?
To my knowledge, the study of this area is, in this timeframe is complete, but the idea was, is they were still going to look forward as more data becomes available. In the years to come, they'll still look to make sure there, you know, no trends emerge. In terms of looking at the state level, as far as I know, I don't think that that's in the plans. But it sounds, I mean, it sounds like what you're saying, to map all the brain cancer cases, and then see if they kind of map to go along with, with other sites that might have issues. Is that what the question was?
Yeah, well, I just think it would be good to know, right? I know that we have a lot of residents in town that are concerned about the incidence of brain cancer around this site specifically. And sure, we want to take comfort that, you know, our numbers are too different from the average. But if that average is being made up of numbers from, you know, similarly polluted locations, that's something that, that we should be aware of. I know we're doing our best here, and we have to get the site cleaned up, and that's what we're doing. We can only move forward, we can't go back. But we also just, we want the residents here to have, have good information.
Yeah. As I said, I don't think that's specifics. I don't, I'm not aware of that being done. But I would be surprised if that were the case. And again, I did, you know, want to reiterate the idea that levels of radiation and other chemicals, you know, the risk assessment was done to look at the potential exposures. And it was thought that the exposures were, you know, people were not likely to be exposed. So just because there's a, you know, a chemical or radiation at a site, doesn't mean that it can in certain situations. But, you know, it all depends on the levels that are there, and how people could potentially be exposed and things like that. And that's what's looked at in a risk assessment.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Steve. Not seeing any other questions from the online audience. Anybody in the audience here have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Rhonda.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. Dr. Goodman, I just had a couple of questions for you. One in particular, there's a Um, one in particular, uh, there's a certain area within the site. And I know of a few neighbors, um, I have a family member as well, who grew up, um, very close proximity to where the site is. Um, she found out later in life, uh, that she did have a brain tumor. And um, I know you spoke briefly about how you don't want to take some of that information, because folks maybe have moved away. From the town of Hanover to another location. Um, I don't know that you might find that somewhat beneficial if they spent most of their childhood in into their adulthood. Um, that maybe that they did find up with with a brain tumor, why wouldn't that be beneficial to some sort of study or analysis? So I quite don't see that. Um, I know the family had reached out to me and told me as well that they don't count it. Um, so to kind of relieve some of the stress levels in that area. Um, I know of a few folks that have some similar situations going on too. What do we tell those folks?
Well, I think. So the the problem is. I'm just trying to think of the best way to explain it. When we look at the. You know, the number observed and the number of expected, it's it's based on, you know, your age at at diagnosis, people's age at diagnosis. And it it's based on the numbers of people in the population. And so, and and I I just want to also reiterate, this is a, this is a statistical analysis, so we're looking at at numbers. And it's, you know, the the fact that anyone had cancer is. Is is horrible. So it's it's hard sometimes to talk about this. And in just numbers, because each number is a person. But the point that I wanted to make is that. You, the way you get the expected number is it's based on how many people are in the population. And so if you are going to take someone that moved away and kind of bring them back in. You would have to bring in everyone that moved away and bring them back in to get the right. An accurate number of of the population, if that makes sense. Because it's it's basically, you're looking at a rate. And so. The the rate, the numerator is is how many people with cancer and the denominator is how many people in the population. And so if you're, you know, you can't just add one to the numerator, you have to add. All the people to the numerator and all the people to the denominator to make it an accurate statistic, if that makes sense.
I guess it does to some point. I just curious why to the folks that are suffering or have tumors. They don't seem to count it. So I think that's probably more of the point I was trying to make.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's. I hate to think of it, it's, of course, everybody counts, everybody's so important. It's just more that you. You're unable to to calculate that statistic, because if you were going to. Include someone that moved away to calculate this figure, you'd have to include everybody that moved away. So you could figure out what the the right ratio was.
Okay, and just one other point. So I guess when you move away, it doesn't matter if you moved away within a year or two years or five years. It's just that you've moved away from the area, so it doesn't matter. I guess I, that's like my question.
Yeah, I mean. To do this analysis, it's what matters is. At where you live at the time you're diagnosed. So basically, if you're in the country. I don't know how they do it in the world, probably similar in in many countries. Wherever you live when you're diagnosed, that's the cancer registry you're put in. So, yeah, if you moved last week and got diagnosed. Um, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be counted. And I mean, you wouldn't be included in that in that statistic, because you would, your address would be entered in where you moved to.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Rhonda. Uh, we do have another hand up here from. Our friend Ken Green. Let's see if we can hear from Ken.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes, uh, Mister Chairman, that's Kenton Green, five ninety five Circuit Street. Uh, just following up to what Rhonda was just talking about. I think this is sort of a unique situation and statistics don't prove anything. I think everybody is pretty much in agreement. That the const, uh, the cancer causing episodes in Hannover were limited in time. Particularly during World War Two. And again, the fact is that. The population on School Street and King Street at that particular time. Was of of foreign nature, mostly Polish people and Lithuanian people who had been brought over here. To work at their fireworks and they all had children who I went to school with and so forth like that. But during the war period time, uh, I'm just taking numbers off the top of my head, but I think it proves the point. There might have been forty, fifty kids that lived on School Street and on King Street. Within two years after the war was over, those kids were gone. So I I, you know, you don't know what happened to them. And so I I I just don't see how statistics. In this particular application makes me feel any better. Uh, as I say, I lived within a mile of that thing for eighty eight years. Fortunately, I didn't get brain cancer, but I, I, as I say. This study doesn't make me comfortable that there there wasn't a problem there. So. Just a comment and I would like to hear a comment.
Well, I think that's, um. You know, as I mentioned, that is a limitation of the study. But again, you, we do have that environmental. Piece of the study as well, which I think is equally important, because that's, and um. Yeah, I don't know that the study measured potential exposures back in the, the, the war era. Um, and yes, so if they were higher back then, that might tell a different story, but it's just based on. You know, the analyses that are that are available now that looked at potential exposures, they don't indicate. That there were any, you know, any elevated exposures to people. And so. I think that that has to be kept in mind. So that, you know, you do have these, the limitations of the epidemiology analysis, but because you can look at this analysis. In concert with the environmental analysis and look at them together and see what they say together.
Thank you, doctor. Um, Giuseppe Fornaro has his hand up here. Let's hear from him.
Hi Dave, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Hi there, Giuseppe Fornaro, four oh nine Cedar Street. Um, thank you so much for that presentation, doctor. I really appreciated it, appreciated the, um. You know, interpretation of the data. I just wanted to make one quick comment on kind of the discussion that's going on from. The the board members, Rod and Iman's comment and uh, Ken Green's comments. We also have to remember that conversely, as residents move to Hanover. Their their time and tenure somewhere else gets taken into into account somewhere else. So we don't know of all the folks who unfortunately have cancer here. You know, whether they came from Hanover or moved from Hanover, you know, it it's it. It ends up being that they go from different places. And I think it's just important to remember that. Folks who leave and go to somewhere else, there's the converse where they come from somewhere. And have environmental things take place and move to Hanover. So I just thought that was an important point to make. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, and I'm sorry, I I didn't think to say it myself, but that's absolutely true, so that. You know, you you're, the idea that maybe the numbers should be bigger, because there are people that moved away. You could also argue that maybe it should be smaller for people that moved in, so that's one thing. And then I think the other thing to add to that is I was talking before about why you you can't just, you know, bring someone in. You know, the idea is, um, it's it's kind of hard to to think of it. Kind of holistically like that, but if you have one person that lived here and moved away and got cancer. Well, how many other people lived here and moved away and didn't get cancer? I mean, so basically that that number, that ratio would have to be different than the ratio of people that stayed. For it to actually have an impact on the statistics. Is that something else to to remember? In terms of giving you a little more confidence in these numbers?
Okay, I think Ken may have another question, or I'm not sure if the hand, his hand is still up from before, let's see.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, Ken.
Yes, Ken Green, five ninety five Circuit. Just another question for the doctor. The environmental analysis that went into this study was taken relatively short, short. A short time ago, within the past, I don't know, ten years at least. But going back to the National Fireworks, that was sixty years ago. Now, doesn't the impact, the chemicals, uh, change? Don't they lessen in in their capacity to cause cancer? Over sixty years, so that what you're looking at today wasn't in existence in nineteen forty two.
Yeah, it it all depends on what was there and, you know, what was there at the time and and whether it went anywhere or whether it stayed put. You're absolutely right about that, and I don't know about any analyses going back that far. I'd have to look into it. I basically was asked to, um. To focus on on this recent analysis, and I did, I looked a little bit about some other things published out there, but I didn't go that far back in time. To see, but you know, based on the more recent analyses. Um, and I do know that a lot of the recent analyses were based on things, you know, they were events that happened decades ago that then. You know, resulted in things still being there in the environment today. So.
Yes, we know that. That's, that's why we're cleaning it up.
Right. But the idea is, yeah, okay.
That's all. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thanks, Ken. Okay. I don't see any other questions at this time. Uh, anything else you want to add, Joe?
Uh, no, I just so want to make it clear, I think it was pretty clear in advance, but that Dr. Goodman did not actually do the study. Uh, the study was done by DPH. I reached out to Dr. Goodman probably about two months ago on the um. Recommendation of our attorney, Robin Main, who's been working with the town for a number of years on this. And Dr. Goodman's, uh, you know, role here was to interpret and explain. The study, not to critique it or or peer review it, and I think that's what she's done here. And again, the objective. From the beginning, when, two years ago, when the board first asked for this study to be. Taken up by DPH was that we would get the most factual, accurate. Scientific data available and and provide it to the community. Um, and I think that's what we've, you know, tried to do. I think Dr. Goodman's done a great job of. Explaining it uh, to some of us laymen. Um, and so it's been, you know, I really appreciate. Her ability to to do that for us. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, so Dr. Goodman is an independent expert in the field and was hired to interpret the study on our behalf and. I apologize for the confusion earlier, but I appreciate your role. And I thank you for your time, doctor.
All right, thank you so much. This is helpful.
Thank you. Have a good night.